Six oh one, I'm going to call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Donahue?
Here.
McKnight?
Here.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Sterns?
Here. If you would please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you have a cellphone, iPhone, iPad, if you would mute them, I appreciate it. I will try to remind you at the end of the meeting to turn them back on. And with that public comment on the agenda, I have one individual, Bill, who wanted to speak to us. If you just give us your address when you get up to the podium, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is actually old business. I hope you'll indulge me for just a second. But in light of the undertaking that two council members are engaged in, along with Drake Parker, I wanted to be helpful. And I came across just recently and read a book that I thought might be very helpful. And so I'd like to give to council members, and Andy, each a copy of that book. Is that legal? Am I going to get in any trouble for influencing public officials by giving you a book?
That was a set of golf clubs, Bill, maybe, but.
Careful.
Only if they're cataways.
This book is by a black woman who is an expert in trauma, and particularly traumas, the difficulties that black people go through. And I found the book to be very interesting because of that topic and the description that she gives of the difficulties faced by black people in general. So I thought it would be appropriate, given the direction that council might go in, in light of the undertaking. I would mention two things. One is that I hope you'll read it with an open mind. I think that it would be easy to think that the stuff that's described in the book doesn't happen to people in Meadville. But I hope that what you'll do is to wait and see whether or not that's true when the voices of people who are not usually heard begin to be heard. The other comment I would make about it is that you'll also see in this book how important the black church can be in the life of black individuals. I'm not saying every black person. But this woman is particularly devout, and so she uses the resources of the black church for her efforts. So here it is.
If you just want to give it to Gary, I'll make sure that.
I put my contact information into the book, so if anybody wanted to talk about it, or.
You can give it to Gary.
Please get in touch with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mayor? Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Anything to help, we appreciate that. There's no other one signed up. Andy, we're going to talk about COVID-19 disaster emergency update.
So again, just a reminder, the city still technically operates under a declaration of disaster emergency ongoing until further action of council. Just this afternoon, and I will just make the public aware, and I will encourage them to seek other resources, such as the venerable Meadville Tribune, who published a breaking news story. But the Secretary of Health, this afternoon in Pennsylvania, the Secretary of Health did issue a revised, updated face mask order, I will call it, that clarifies and strengthens the public health order with respect to wearing a face mask in essentially public locations, and there's various details. But I encourage council and the public to explore that and to review that. And it appears that we're anticipating additional guidance in terms of municipalities, police, law enforcement, et cetera, additional guidance from the Secretary of Health with respect to enforcement of that order. So if I have more information, or learn more information to share with council, I will. In terms of Crawford County operating under a green status and sort of doing our best to return to normal operations, the fire station will, Meadville Central Fire Station will technically reopen to the public on Monday of next week, Monday, July 6th, and to resume non-emergency activities, which include commercial fire inspections. They do a handful of safety drills, fire drills, conduct some safety programs, tours, car seat checks. Those will all be at the discretion of the chief, but they'll begin to resume sort of those non-emergency functions that we had suspended for early on. And lastly, as I've reported to council a number of times, so parking enforcement downtown will also resume on July 6th. And I will say that we anticipate that. So Lindy McCartney is our parking enforcement officer. We still have another parking enforcement officer on furlough. She's tasked with overall administration of the program. She's been doing lots of maintenance. There's been collections going on for the last week. Our intent is to do enforcement light, if you will. We're not, it's where we've, have talented issues, we'll have limited manpower anyhow, but the meters will in fact be in effect with that effective July 6th. We will plan to issue a press release, a formal press release about that prior to Monday, the 6th. And I think that's all I have, Your Honor, with respect to the COVID-19 disaster emergency update.
Council, any questions for Andy?
You find out about wearing your masks, like at the parks and stuff? Because that was the first thing when this came out, my son was asking me if they have to wear them to play basketball. And I said, I really don't know. I mean, we've watched Wolf say that on the, I mean, you don't need to answer it right now. Just curious as to what we're going to tell us. Because the answer is, well, the cops aren't going to stop and, you know, make us wear a mask. I don't know.
Yeah. So I mean, I'll just read you letter A. So face covering is required, except as provided anyhow. Letter A, outdoors, and so mask is required if they are outdoors and unable to consistently maintain a distance of six feet from individuals who are not members of their household. And this requires essentially, this starts off, anytime you leave your house, essentially you're to have these masks on. So we will have to evaluate what that means, if that causes us to reevaluate our park policies right now, which it may.
Our parks are now posted masks, correct?
No, our parks are posted essentially use at your own risk. We're.
Highland gets, HP Way gets used a lot.
Right.
I mean, there'll be 50 kids playing basketball out there during the day.
So that may, I suspect, right, there may be more guidance that follows from the Secretary of Health, and that may be one of them with respect to the operation of public parks. And when we receive that guidance, we will update our plan of attack again.
It's been ongoing change almost every day. Any other questions? Notice of executive meetings, Katie?
Your Honor, an executive session was held on June 17th, 2020, to discuss real estate and litigation. Additionally, an executive session was held today, July 1st, 2020, prior to the meeting, to discuss real estate.
Motion to approve amendments. Motion, second?
Second.
Katie? Sir, I'm sorry, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Six, communications. Katie, we have any under communication?
I do, Your Honor, I do not have any communication.
Andy, managers' report?
I'll just note, council, so the communication that council has received with respect to interest in serving on boards and authorities appears later in your agenda under appointments. That's, we've been segregating those particular communications under appointments lately from general communication. All right, so managers' report. In your packet, fresh off the press, I think you have a spreadsheet called 2020 Cleanup Day. Should be just a one-pager. It's not folded, it's just, so I don't know if you're looking for it, but I see it, I'm holding it. So Cleanup Day was held this past Saturday, 8:00 a.m., noon, August, I'm sorry, August, June 27th. Officially advertised to begin at 8:00 a.m. through noon. By 8:00 a.m., we had already processed 14 loads. Meadville likes to be early and, so in total participation, you see vehicle loads there. A total of 137 loads received, which is a very strong number historically. Compared to last year, was only 79 loads during that same period. 121 in 2018, 93 in 2017, and 142 back in 2016. It seems to be almost like in every other year, a pattern developing there in terms of volume. You'll see the cost in terms of labor and dumpsters, so a total expense of $5,198. You see the revenue from the $10 per vehicle load fee of $1,381, a scrap metal value of $371 for revenue of $1,750. So in total net project cost of just shy of, so $3,445 is the net cost. Any questions there?
It was really busy, Andy. I was down there at nine, and I was shocked at how many people came compared to last year, I guess. But of course, it rained really hard.
Yeah, I mean, given the weather, right, it rained pretty much hard and steady, or often, you know, pretty consistently for that whole period.
No, they ever complained about the rain.
So I thank members of council and staff that, staff that that morning. The council will recall that the city took title to the DEP building, 230 Chestnut Street, at the beginning of the year, and it had initiated an HVAC and lighting project. That's probably at the 80% completion phase. Actually, the lighting component is virtually done other than a small punch list and some training and programming. And the next action, though, the new rooftop unit will be delivered. We're anticipating now Tuesday, July 7th. That will necessitate a closure of one block of Market Street between Chestnut Street and Arch Street. Some anticipating final details. Same thing, we'll issue a press release. Mike is waiting on the final crane plan from the contractor, but that's what we anticipate. Is a block of Market Street between Chestnut and Arch Street closed that day, so that a crane will stage on Market Street and lift the new unit to the rooftop on the fourth floor. And the contractor informs me that the intersection of Market and Chestnut will require temporary closure, probably as they position cranes and vehicles in place. So that's what I know with respect to that project. In my notes to council, I noted that the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources, and Conservation Service has reported that they have awarded a design contract, right, design, to a partnership of three firms for the Rainbow Lake Dam project. So probably sometime, I'm guessing, late in July or August, there will be sort of a kickoff meeting with city staff and those design consultants to review the project. So just a reminder that that phase is fully funded with federal dollars, no city obligation there. And we won't have the obligation to follow through with the design, but presumably, though, at the end of that design phase, we'll be looking for grant funds and other things to look for rehabilitation of the dam. So city staff will be engaging in that in a few short weeks. Back on September 18th, I attended a fire chief, Hasko, a meeting held by Crawford County Department of Public Safety. It was sort of a, I'm sorry?
June 18th.
June 18th. What month did I say again?
September.
Oh, because it was, I don't know where, I have nine 18 sitting on here. It was June. It was 6/18. My notes tell me nine. June 18th. Talked about various things related to fire service. Talked about a lot of the volunteer departments had missed revenue with respect to fundraisers, so there was some talk about that. And the county was trying to assess interest if there was interest in a planning study through the Department of Community and Economic Development for the delivery of fire services in Crawford County. I know not much concrete came out of that, but if there are directions, I will certainly share that with council. Mr. Bywater referenced the subcommittee of council that was appointed to meet with our local chapter of the NAACP. There's been some communication there. We initially thought we might have met today, but we've sort of punted till after the holiday. So I'm sure Councilwoman Vogon, Councilwoman Vogel, and Deputy Mayor McKnight will report back to council once that kicks off. We issued, I've not seen the press release, well, via press release, or an update on fireworks just being, entering into the Fourth of July weekend. So a reminder to council and our citizens that though fireworks are legal to be purchased in Pennsylvania, city ordinance prohibits the discharge of nearly all fireworks, frankly. And so we issued that reminder, and also with campfires. Those, that press release should be found on our website. So we allow recreational outdoor fires that are small in nature, that are 25 feet from, that burn only dry seasoned firewood, and are 25 feet from other structures. And remind also that citizens operating those campfires, we reserve the right, the fire department, to ask you to shut down that campfire in the event that it's causing complaints. And then lastly, the city building will be closed Friday, July 3rd, in observance of the July 4th holiday. And your city manager will be on vacation all of next week. Gary Johnson will be in charge.
Any questions for Andy? No. Old business, discussion, resolution, appointment policy. At our last meeting, we pretty much worked through the appointment process. Scanned through it, and I think everything was covered that we discussed. Does council have any comments? August is your baby, so do you have an opportunity to take a look at it? Everything all right?
Yes, it was the collective baby of lots of people. And, no, I mean, this basically just, yet again, kind of folds in our conversation last time, which is chiefly around reappointment and committing us to certain stakeholders. So that has been addressed here.
Council, any questions?
Yes, Your Honor. At the last meeting, and I'll reiterate it now, I am a little bit concerned about requiring people who have served to go through the appointment process for reappointments. I think I expressed that at the last, at the last meeting.
Can I address that?
Okay.
Yeah. So Jim, I think my understanding when we walked away from our meeting last time is that we had identified that ABC members with an expiring term would be notified 90 days prior of that expiration. They'd have 30 days to submit just a letter saying that they wanted to remain on the board. And if they hadn't submitted a letter, or if they indicated that they weren't interested, that would give city staff 60 days then to go through the process as defined elsewhere. So that's on the backside of the proposal, if you see that. That was what I was under the impression of when we walked away last time, was that 90, 60?
And the reason we discussed that was because most individuals that do want to be reappointed normally sends us a letter asking to be reappointed. So it's kind of using the same process, other than they don't have to go through the entire resume and stuff.
Yeah, it simplifies it a little bit and gives city staff.
Except it says, all regulations will apply moving forward. Did you look at page two of that? That is not my understanding.
Sure. Would you like to strike the members appointed prior to this policy adoption section?
I, yeah, I could support it with that.
Can we not completely out?
So we could just remove that?
Okay. Katie, you got that?
Just the very last section.
The whole section?
Yeah.
The last paragraph, right?
Yeah. So it would end with that reappointment process, and that would be that.
Is that satisfactory to you? Larry, any questions?
None.
Sean?
I think this just makes it more complicated than what we were doing before. I support it just because there was something that one of the other people had written in to complain about, and I agreed with them, and maybe this will eliminate this from happening in the future, is somebody that saw a position only to be completely ignored or shoved aside in the process, often without even so much as acknowledgement of their application, which I don't like, and I know it happened. And I want that to be avoided, but this, if somebody asks me what to do now, I will say, call Autumn. Because I don't, you got me confused, all right? But I will tell them to call you. But I'll let you have this. What Jim didn't like, I didn't like either. So.
Well, let me, instead of calling Autumn, why don't we, why don't we?
I love talking to people.
Well, why don't we, could we not attach this to the website when, under authorities? So individuals have it there?
Yeah, that's exactly where it'll appear.
Good idea.
Okay, there you go. There you go, Sean.
Well, then my other question is, like, we have people that are applying tonight. Now, they have sent in letters, okay? Now, normally, I don't know any of those people, okay? But the letters, I mean, they appear to be interested, and the people that are interested. A lot of times when you're doing something for free for the public, if you're interested, that's a good start. So I would say, go ahead and let them want.
Well, here's the.
Is that something we could do?
Well, here's the thing. Well, if we accept this policy, you know, we want transparency. So we want to make sure the authorities have the opportunity to talk to their possible appointees and get their recommendation back. We did this with the appointment of the RDA. So if we appoint this policy, then we stick to the policy.
Well, because.
If you're not going to stick to it, then this is a waste of this piece of paper.
I'm thinking that, you know, you don't want to let these people get away.
I don't think they're going to get away. They're just going to go through the process.
They'll refer their names.
Yeah, well, and they can just, they go through the process. Everybody's treated equally and fairly and transparent.
Okay.
If you're not going to do it, this piece of paper's useless.
Well, if we do this, then that's what we're doing.
You're following.
Right? I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's okay. Any other questions?
None. Do we have a resolution?
We do.
We do.
Okay.
Can I read the resolution?
I sure do.
Thanks.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached appointment process for city authorities, boards, and commissions is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached hereto, as and for a binding and effective policy of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the appointment process shall remain in effect until revised or terminated by further resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Any other further discussion? Roll call. I'm sorry, okay, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Motion to approve policies and procedure.
I have an ordinance set out, or a resolution for that one, too.
You have, I'm going to read it.
Sure. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas ordinance number 3651 of 2008, an ordinance of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, implemented a permit application process for public assemblies and parades upon any street, lane, alley, highway, sidewalk, park, or any other public place within the City of Meadville. And whereas the City of Meadville desires to adopt updated policies and procedures for special event, park shelter reservation, and race and parade permit applications, which shall remain in effect until revised or terminated by further resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville, the attached policies and procedures for special event, park shelter reservation, and race and parade permits are hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached hereto, as and for a binding and effective policies of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms.
Motion to approve?
Aye.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Andy?
We reviewed this last meeting, just to refresh council. One of the questions that just occurred to me, did I put this in my notes to council about electricity, electric usage, and some data about that? Yes. Okay, all right. Sometimes I.
You're testing us, aren't you?
Well, yes, I am. That was a test to see if you read the stuff I send you. And it was a test to whether I actually wrote it down and did it, or just thought it, so.
No, you wrote it down and did it.
So I think, so one of the questions, I think, Jim, you raised was to revisit the electric fee and whatever.
You recommended against changing that.
That's correct. Thank you for reminding me what my recommendation was. Only because there's very little usage, so there's very little capability on Chestnut Street right now, particularly Chestnut Street. Most of the power outlets are actually in the lowest block of Chestnut Street between Water and Mulberry, which is the block that we virtually never close for public events because of access exiting Market Square, and then also the bank and Triac Apartments. So we need that lower section of Chestnut so people can filter out. So typically, those outlets aren't even available for public use for events. And I believe we've had, I think the number was two, Katie, events in the prior year that actually use electricity. So I think we can revisit it any time, but based on the availability and the use of it, I, it was my recommendation to keep it at the same $50 fee. And then I think the only other change.
Cleaning fee?
Yeah. So when we look at the park shelter reservation policies procedure, we added, this was based on feedback from the Public Works Director. So number two there, we, so it's a $50 reservation fee with a $25 cleanup deposit that would be returned if the conditions are such that, I guess we find that we have had some instances after use that there is an excessive amount of garbage or a good deal of staff time required to clean up after events. So we would hold that as a deposit. That was a change. And that's the only differences from what we had discussed last meeting. Is that an accurate assessment, Katie?
Yes.
Any questions for Andy?
No.
How would that, how would that deposit be returned to folks? Do we then issue a check back, or we just don't?
The language that we've put in the policy is that we would ask them to postdate their check for the day of the event, so that if the conditions are such that we do not need excessive cleanup, we can just mail the check back.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. We have letters of interest for appointments. Now here's where the question comes in.
But Your Honor.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss one?
Well, we have a separate resolution that enunciates the fee schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry. Want to read the resolution?
Sure.
Thanks.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas ordinance number 3651 of 2008, an ordinance of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to Article 741.13, references the imposing and collecting of reasonable security deposits, fees, and charges for all parades and public assemblies that do not constitute or First Amendment activities. And whereas revised policies and procedures for special event, park shelter reservation, and race and parade permits and applications were passed and enacted on July 1st, 2020, pursuant to ordinance number 3651 of 2008, and whereas the Council of the City of Meadville desires that the new fees be established for special event, park shelter reservation, and race and parade permits will be effective immediately. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Meadville, pursuant to ordinance number 3651 of 2008, hereby approves the attached amendments to the fee schedule of the City of Meadville in addition to any other fees adopted and imposed by any motion, resolution, or ordinance of the Council of the City of Meadville.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Aye.
Discussion, Andy?
Pretty self-explanatory. So it's just, I mean, the fees are as discussed in the prior policies, but they're attached here, too.
Any questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Katie, we have three letters of interest, we have one for the Planning, Zoning Commission, Code Appeal Board, and another one for Code Appeal. Um, you wanna just go ahead and do the letters and then counsel, under the new policy, we refer this back to the authorities?
Uh, Your Honor, the first one is dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty. It is from Peter Grella. Uh, he expresses his interest in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. He lives on Pine Street and has done so since October two thousand seventeen. He's a graduate of Allegheny College, class of two thousand eight. Um, he works for the Crawford County Planning Office as a land use planner. Um, he details what his job entails and how that applies to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, he also states that he puts himself forward as someone who resides in Meadville, pays taxes in Meadville, votes in Meadville, and who has plans to live nowhere else. He also states that he's spoken with his superiors at the county and has gotten clearance from its solicitor to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and he also expresses his understanding that you are considering a new formal policy and procedure for appointments and just asks that he is kept apprised of new requirements that the council would have with him.
Next one?
The second letter is.
Mr. Grella happens to be in the audience this evening, you could wait, Peter.
Alright, thanks for being here.
Uh, the second letter is from Jennifer McDonough. Okay. Uh, it is dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty. Uh, she expresses her interest in serving on Code's Appeal Board. She lives and works in Meadville and is a licensed attorney who, with a career focused on legal, or I'm sorry, contract negotiation and real estate law. She currently works for Allegheny College in the Office of Students with Disabilities and sits on the board of the Meadville Neighborhood Center. Um, she states that she believes that enforcing building codes is one of the most important ways to improve quality of life. And she also has a special interest in preserving the historical buildings in Meadville and making sure that they are safe and accessible.
Okay.
Uh, the third letter is also dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty. It is from Byron Rich, and he also expresses interest in serving on Code's Appeal Board. He is a homeowner and resident of the City of Meadville and has been since two thousand fourteen. Currently, he's the Assistant Professor and Director of Art, Science, and Innovation at Allegheny College. Prior to joining Allegheny, he worked in general contracting and has an in-depth knowledge of construction and building code, codes. He also has a minor in architecture, um, and expresses that his unique combination of skills and experiences in working with community partners, hands-on skills, and an educational background gives him particular familiarity with policy as it relates to construction and makes him an ideal member for the Code Appeal Authority.
Okay, thank you. So what we will do, Peter, since you're in the room, we approved a new policy. So we'll be going through the process of the policy. So these will all be forwarded to the authorities?
Well, yeah, there'll be, we'll have to, we'll have to create an application. Um, and, I mean, there's an application process before it gets to the authorities, but we'll, we'll follow the policy as, as, and we will inform these individuals and provide them with a copy of the policy and, and a copy of the application when it's available.
All right, thank you. So, let me jump back down through here. Okay, under new business discussion resolution, authorizing signature for a line of credit and note, security agreement between the City of Meadville and the Meadville Market Authority. Should we have a resolution?
We do. Uh, resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreements are hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached hereto, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreements in the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Okay, motion? To authorize signature? Second?
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Sean, did you?
Sean made the motion, I'm gonna read it. Discussion, Andy?
Uh, council, so this, this action comes before you. Um, in the audience tonight is Devin Stelt, Chairman of the Meadville Market Authority, um, the seven-member board charged with operation of the Market House. Obviously, it's been a, uh, sort of a tough spring in terms of, um, COVID impact in terms of the finances of the Market House and the Market Authority. Um, had some challenging twenty nineteen as well with respect to, um, equipment and, uh, capital repairs and equipment repairs that were unbudgeted. Um, and then the, really the pilot year of the mobile food market, um, suffered a, an operating loss last year as well. But anyhow, um, had raised some concerns with respect to ongoing cash flow of the Market Authority. And, um, Devin came to me, um, seeking options that might be available to the authority for operating assistance. Um, and this line of credit agreement, and I should introduce Gary Lizio, uh, serving this evening for, um, Elizabeth Spatafor, um, who is ill. But, um, Gary drafted this, so it's a line of credit agreement, uh, essentially a ten thousand dollar revolving line of credit. Gary, do you want to speak to a minute just how this agreement is structured in terms of interest and, well?
Sure, it works a lot like a credit card. So the authority has access to up to ten thousand dollars credit, and they can draw on that by communicating with the city, the city would fund them. They only pay interest when they've borrowed the money. Um, for the amount of days, it could be two days, or it could be thirty days, it could be a year. Uh, they can take advances when they want. Um, we set it up with a fixed interest rate, I just plugged that in. It could be a variable rate, it could be tied to an index. Um, lots of lines of credit for businesses are tied to, say, Wall Street Journal Prime, plus one is a common number. We secure it with a security interest, so UCC lien on the Market Authority's, uh, physical assets. Not a mortgage, but just their equipment, et cetera, whatever they may have, like that accounts. It's due in a year, but the city can also demand payment at any time.
In a year from now, they could be, as any line of credit could be extended.
It could be renewed, yes.
Okay.
So it's set up with interest payments that would start in thirty days on any month that they may have borrowed, uh, in the length of those payments, much later, the principal is due in a year.
Have we developed an interest rate yet?
So the only guidance we have, right, is a market rate interest, um, would be essentially prime plus one is a, is a typical.
Right. So that would be three point two five plus one right now, as of?
Right. Um, so I think, uh, a member of council, I think, Jim, you had asked, you know, what, what is inappropriate, given the potential risk and, um, around, you know, the, the funds, you know, should the interest rate reflect a, reflect that risk? Um, I don't know there's much guidance, but that's, that's the current marketplace is prime plus one.
Alright. There are some clauses in here about preparing financial statements. Uh, can you prepare us those statements, uh, does our finance department do that? And if that's the case, uh, do we charge the Market Authority for those services? And do they reimburse us?
Yeah, so we have a management agreement with the authority and have had since the creation of the authority.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, unfortunately, um, the crisis that we've been going through has hit many businesses, uh, from nonprofits to profitable businesses that have closed. I, I see where we have no really options here because it is a business in downtown. There are other businesses connected with the Market House, such as a bakery and, and the, and the restaurant. Um, if it fails, the doors get locked and those businesses are done also. So that's not a direction that I want to see us to go in. Um, but what I do want to offer is that yesterday, Commissioner Eric, um, Henry just posted about loans. Um, I believe there's, I don't, I won't even give you the numbers because I've seen so many different loans coming out of the county. But it is for nonprofits, it's for businesses, and I would, I would encourage you to apply for that as a nonprofit for the Market Authority. Um, I'm not sure.
I believe they can go up to seventy-five hundred is what I've heard, um, but that the county will only fund, it's a request can, uh, be up to seventy-five hundred, but the county will only fund seventy-five percent. It's what I'm under the impression.
I'm not sure that all the details, it just come out yesterday, Eric put it on, on, uh, what it is. But I would encourage you to look at that.
We will.
And I'm just gonna ask you guys to watch your spending, to be responsible, you have been. This is kind of out of a lot of people's control.
So, Your Honor, I might interrupt, so I, I had, when, in, in conversation around this, right? So I had been invited to, last week, the Market Authority held a special board meeting, uh, last, maybe last Tuesday morning, maybe, um, of which they specifically discussed this, right? Of the, sort of the urgent need of finances and, and then also, um, you know, the potential agreement that we're reviewing this evening. And I'd asked Devin to, to consider what the, what steps might be taken in terms of, um, sort of immediate relief, corrective action, future plans. And I don't know, I mean, it might be appropriate, could we ask Devin to share those with council?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so, um, we've actually been in the process of making quite a few, uh, or developing some changes to be made at the Market House. Uh, as Andy mentioned, um, our, uh, finances in two thousand nineteen were not where we wanted them to be. Uh, we did have, uh, higher revenues in two thousand nineteen than we had in previous years, but the expenses were also up related to that. Some of that related to things like, uh, capital improvement or maintenance, uh, issues as well as, as, uh, working through the mobile market. Uh, but obviously, you know, uh, having a loss like we did is, is not a sustainable thing. So, uh, with the electrical improvements that were completed, uh, thanks to the city and the grants that were maintained or gotten through that process, uh, we entered, uh, this year, uh, working with Steve Davies and, uh, some contractors to, uh, develop an interior renovation and, and redesign plan to focus on our, uh, core mission of supporting local agriculture and farmers and, and, you know, specialty foods and things like that, uh, which I think has been kind of the, the direction that the market's been moving for the last several years. Uh, and to, you know, really emphasize the profitable things in the marketplace, uh, uh, as opposed to some of the other things that, that weren't selling as well. So, uh, we were already kind of moving in that direction before things went south in terms of, of, uh, shutdowns and all that kind of stuff. Um, so, um, we're in the process of accelerating some of that. Um, as, uh, Andy said, we met last week, we had another meeting this morning. Uh, we approved this morning some changes to our scheduling. Uh, we will, we, we'd already had closed the market on Mondays, um, due to some concerns about, uh, masking and, and, uh, people getting kind of aggressive about that, which hopefully the governor's order will kind of reduce some of the pushback on that. But, uh, we're gonna close the market, uh, on Tuesdays as well and then shift our hours on, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday to, uh, accommodate more after-work shoppers. Um, and then have our regular hours on Saturday. Uh, as part of that, we're going to, uh, reduce our personnel costs somewhat to help lower expenses. Uh, unfortunately, we have a lot of fixed expenses, so we don't have a lot of areas where we can easily cut expenses, but that's, uh, you know, on the personnel side, what we're trying to, uh, do in, in terms of, uh, making an immediate impact. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring those hours back as we see that situation improve. Part of that is gonna also allow us to bring out a curbside delivery option so that customers who don't want to go into the store itself, uh, can do an online or phone order. Uh, we can fulfill that for them, uh, on a weekly basis. And, uh, you know, if, if, that way, if things, you know, change with the pandemic again, we're already set up to accommodate that, um, moving forward. So we hopefully wouldn't have the same kind of impact as we saw in April. Excuse me. Then, uh, we are also, uh, lucky in that we have found a, uh, anonymous donor who's gonna fund the first stage, or largely fund the first stage of this interior redesign process. Um, so we are going to move forward with that in terms of hopefully improving, uh, layout, uh, traffic flow, and ultimately, of course, sales and revenue. And, uh, finally, I would say, you know, uh, that one of our, um, you know, we, we came to the city and to Andy, uh, because we, you know, were concerned about a short-term shortfall that would force us into a situation where we, where we could not continue to operate. Um, and, uh, certainly our intention to do everything in our power to not have to rely on this, uh, line of credit. And, uh, you know, if we are in that position, um, we certainly intend for our use of that to be as minimal as possible. So we're not, uh, in any way looking at this as like a gift or expecting that it would be forgiven in any way. You know, we understand that this is, uh, you know, a loan that will be paid back in a timely fashion, so. But, any questions?
Yeah, but I do have one. I want to make a, you know, closure of it, that my spouse is on that board. So does that become a conflict of interest for me to be in the discussion and to vote on this?
Uh, you could flip yourself off and vote, let's recuse yourself and vote.
Okay. So I want to take part in the discussion.
You could take part in the discussion.
I can?
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry, just wanted to make sure.
Sir?
Any questions from council?
Uh, I'm just curious, is the, uh, the Grill, is that, has that reopened? Or is there any sign of it reopening?
Uh, yeah, I've been in contact, uh, with, uh, the Grill, um, and, uh, they are hoping to reopen this month. Uh, they did, they did pay their July rent, uh, already. Um, and they, uh, are putting into place plans, uh, but those are still not finalized, and I don't have a date as of this time. But I'm certainly encouraged by the fact that they, that they did pay their rent for July. So clearly, you know, they're, uh, serious about making sure that they reopen. And certainly, this is the time that, that they should be, because we can use the outdoor space, uh, you know, to accommodate more people and, and, uh, seems like a good time now to, uh, jump on that while the weather's nice.
Okay, sorry, just to address your question again, so your spouse is just on the board, is not a tenant at, at the Market House, or selling anywhere, or personally benefiting in any way?
No.
I think you can vote on this. It's not personal benefit to you, right?
So Devin, um, do you guys have planned for fundraising to help to offset possibly some of this loss?
Yeah, we are, so, our, our last couple meetings have been kind of, uh, consumed by this immediate discussion. Uh, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to get some substantive discussion, uh, between meetings on, uh, we have a few different, uh, fundraising proposals, uh, that, uh, members of the authority have been working on. Um, so we are gonna review those and, uh, you know, implement those, hopefully, you know, later than our next meeting, which is in two weeks.
Are there any questions?
Um, uh, not a question directly for you, Devin, although, I mean, thank you for your, for being a volunteer and, uh, putting in all the time and effort that this takes. Um, I, I, I do, I guess, just want to express, um, my concern while we're on the topic, right? This is like another public resource and public service that is kind of in emergency mode right now, um, that we don't have the, um, financial capacity to support. I feel like this is a pattern that we're seeing, right? I mean, the city itself, uh, the rep complex seems to be, uh, in this every year. Uh, the redevelopment authority had to structure, and, uh, right? So, so as much as there are changes maybe that the Market Authority needs to make in terms of business, this is also like a larger scale, uh, issue in terms of the municipal revenue that we can and can't raise. Um, and I think some of that is set at the state level, so, uh, I think that we need to take that into consideration, too, and really advocate for the public services and resources, uh, here in our towns. We're not constantly in emergency, uh, fight or flight. Thanks for your work, Devin.
Thank you.
Larry? Jim?
Thank you, please.
Thank you again for your time and effort.
Thank you, thanks for your consideration.
Appreciate it.
So, Your Honor, report, counsel, before you would call the vote, if that's where you're headed. So the blanks that we need to fill in would be that interest rate blank on the, on the demand promissory note, because where that appears, I believe, so, I don't.
I would move to make that, uh, prime plus one percent.
Second. Got a motion, second? Discussion? Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Okay. What else do we have?
Now we have to act on.
Now we have to act on...
Is there anything?
Could I ask one question, just to clarify, counsel? Is the intention to leave it fixed then for the first year, prime plus one, versus variable? It's a little difficult variable for calculating for finance, because there's going to be draws, that's complicated math, versus just leaving it fixed for a time period?
I have no problem leaving it fixed.
I have your thoughts.
We all agree.
So prime is 3.25 today, as close to business anyhow?
Four point two five percent for the first year.
Right.
Is that acceptable?
Absolutely.
Anything else we need to fix before our call, for our resolution? Ready to vote? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. We have a resolution authorizing temporary access and authority agreement for demolition of structure located at 1099 South Cottage Street. Resolution, please.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville, that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city's solicitor, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties there too.
Motion, please. Motion. Second?
All second.
Discussion, Andy?
Your Honor, this is an agreement with Lavina Cudre, the owner of 1099 South Cottage Street. This is a property subject to ongoing code enforcement violations, and I'll invite Gary Johnson to either chime in or correct me, but ultimately resulted in an engineering report deeming the structure unsafe, and I think we had provided that report to council. And ultimately, Ms. Cudre lives with her daughter, is actually a client of Chaps, and Chaps manages her funds, and anyhow, has ultimately agreed to provide city access to demolish the property, to essentially abate the unsafe conditions, and then we would lean the property for the cost of demolition. That's essentially, is that a good enough summary at this point? It had been in Judge Pendolino's court, and I think Judge Pendolino sort of punted for us to come, to attempt to come to some resolution without further enforcement action and action by his court. Ms. Cudre has, in fact, signed this agreement before it's come to council tonight, and that's essentially the nutshell of the action here.
Any questions for Andy?
I do have a question. What procedures will be taken to remove the innumerable cats that are living in this structure?
I'm going to answer that for you, if that's okay. Autumn called me the other night, and her texted me the other night with this. So I had a conversation. I am not employed by the Crawford County Humane Society, I am now fully retired, but I can help answer that question. I had a conversation with Mary Ann, giving Lavina different options on the number of cats that's in the facility. They are her cats, she is feeding them, so under Commonwealth law, she is legal owner of them. They're not strays, they're not feral. So when I talked to Mary Ann, it was conveyed to me that she's making arrangements for the care and well-being of those animals once they're removed from there.
Is this a typical process?
No. This was the, we drafted this agreement for this situation.
And it came to this point because it had been a problem so many times, it had come through?
Yes.
And doesn't have the resources to, to abate the nuisance?
She's been paying the taxes.
I believe the tax, no, taxes aren't current? I don't know the tax status, actually.
They are not.
Okay.
Any other questions?
The source of funding will be?
Community development block grant funds budgeted, already budgeted for the elimination of slums and blight.
This is the first one. I suspect we're going to have more of these.
Yeah. Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. We have a resolution authorizing signature for license agreement case.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville, that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city's solicitor, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, comptroller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties there too.
Motion.
I'm going to...
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Andy?
Your Honor, Mr. Gephardt is here in the audience, owner of Chipper's, and had approached the city, so similar, and this is a very similar agreement with respect to Julian's restaurant, and then also the Jabba Tree Cafe. This is for use of Market Alley behind Chipper's Pub, is the same form of agreement that you've reviewed, I think just your prior meeting for those other two entities. And I think, Ron, you already have the tables out front on Chestnut Street set up, or at least, I said you already had the Chestnut Street side table set up, I believe.
Yeah, I've got tables set up in the back alley too, so you can see what they look like. There's over eight feet of egress between everything, and it looks pretty nice.
Yep, and there's a layout map here attached as part of the exhibit.
We're glad to help, we're glad to help to make the businesses survive. I talked to quite a few of the businesses downtown that have already done the outside seating, and it's great to hear that their profit has raised at least 30%. So hopefully that'll help with you also. The only thing I'm going to ask, as I ask of all of them when I visit them, just please keep the area picked up, so when people go by, there's, we're not attracting animals, you know.
I'm sorry, I'm...
No, just make sure it's cleaned up and picked up, so it doesn't attract animals after the coast.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Just appreciate that. Counsel, any questions?
I'm glad to see this alley getting used, that'll be great.
Your Honor, the comments, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Thank you, I got to get back to my kitchen.
Thank you, Ron.
You got wings tonight?
I'll have that down, insurance all straightened out. I called them today, they're hello.
Thanks, have a great night. Resolution disposing of municipality records. Katie?
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville, that whereas by virtue of Resolution Number 47, adopted August 24, 2004, the city has declared its intent to follow the schedule and procedures for the disposition of records as set forth in the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission's Municipal Records Manual, approved December 16, 2008, and last amended on March 28, 2019. And whereas, in accordance with Act 428 of 1968, each individual act of disposition shall be approved by resolution of the governing body of the municipality. Now therefore be it resolved with the Council of the City of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, in accordance with the above cited Municipal Records Manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of the attached public records.
Motion, please.
Simple.
Second.
Aye.
Very second. Discussion, Andy?
So, Your Honor, this is really just part of our regular record cycle, record retention cycle, where we've been doing pretty well in maintaining a regular cycle. You'll see that most of these records are a seven-year expiration date, what have expired, December 31, 2019. This happens to be a number of years ago, it's, we would spend a lot of money on banker's boxes that are not cheap to file permanent storage, and so this is our first year in our cycle that we will actually reuse plastic totes to avoid that cost. So most of these records are stored in totes that will then be recycled and reused as part of our ongoing record retention. But you'll see the list attached here.
The records are still kept down at the fire department.
They're on the second floor of the fire station, yes.
I have one question.
Yep.
What is the appraisal dated 1969?
It is a giant book full of appraisals of various city equipment, none of which is still active.
So it's not a real estate appraisal, it would have been an asset inventory, I assume. Right.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Counsel, remember your statements. Jim, I'll start with you this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth of July. As you're enjoying your picnics and fireworks, remember the reason for the holiday and honor to spear that it. Thank you.
Larry? I agree with what Jim said, remember, you know, people have lost their lives that we have our freedom, and I don't think it's something that we need to take lightly. We've got a lot of problems in our country, around the world, and I think people need to really pay attention to what this date, the Fourth of July, really means. It's not a time for people just to set off fireworks, which aren't allowed in the city, as Andy noted, but it's a time to remember those that made the ultimate sacrifice, have given their life for us to be able to be here. Juan?
Sure, two quick points from me. First, last time, during our last meeting in June, I had brought up concerns around the cost of COVID-19 testing at the Meadville Medical Center, and as Jim rightly pointed out, the kind of sticker shock that I felt on the website was just what is charged to insurance companies. So I was assured by the chief medical officer at the Meadville Medical Center that no one will pay out of pocket for COVID-19 testing or COVID-19 care. She confirmed that I could share that as well. They're, right now, they're just administering tests, as I understand it, to folks who are showing symptoms. So if you are asymptomatic, you'll have to find other drive-through options, like Walmart, because that's the state that we're in right now. So I want to thank Denise Johnson, Dr. Johnson, for clearing that up. I want to thank Meadville Medical Center for providing that care. Obviously, you know, it's a scary time. I have folks who were afraid that they'd come in contact but don't have health insurance and aren't working right now, and so it's a real mess that we're in, but luckily, folks here can get the care that they need and get tested if they are symptomatic. Second point I want to make is that the moratorium on residential and commercial evictions that's happened statewide is set to close next week. There are resources for, obviously for businesses in the area, so reach out and we can connect you to those, I'm happy to facilitate that. And also for residential tenants, if you're facing eviction, we are working to make some COVID-19 CDVG money available, and there's also other supports out there right now. So reach out if you are fearing eviction when next week, when the moratorium lifts next week. Other than that, have a happy and safe Fourth of July.
Thank you.
I'd just like to ask everybody to relax and enjoy the weather, and take a few days off here, the weather's nice and enjoyable. John, you enjoy the weather.
Thanks, I've been doing a lot of golfing. I just want to echo Larry's comments and Jim's, you know, just remember what the Fourth of July is about, since I did speak about animals tonight. I do want to point out, if there are fireworks, please make sure your animals are confined to your property. I can't tell you how many animals take off running when they hear large booms, and the sad part is, Westmead's not too far from the college, and a lot of people up there have pets, so please, keep an eye on your pets. If they do come up missing, contact your local law enforcement and the Humane Society. And with that, I just want to wish everybody a happy Fourth. Andy, enjoy your vacation, you certainly earned it. And have fun, be safe. I want everybody else to be safe also. We had four more confirmed cases today. So the masks are important, I have mine on and off, but please, just stay safe, it's the main thing. Is that all called? Oh, we're going to go into executive session four?
Real estate, Your Honor.
Real estate.
I would move to adjourn, Your Honor.
I have a second, thank you. Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. We're adjourned, thank you for coming tonight.